The ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In battle we shake this land divine. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. The ballad, the ballad. Your voices loud, it's crystal clear. Kiwi dreams and hopes collide. Truth, the one so stern with pride. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In battle we shake this land divine. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. With the ocean in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In this moment, powers redefined. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. The ballad, the ballad. Your voices loud, it's crystal clear. Kiwi dreams and hopes collide. Truth, the one so stern with pride. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In battle we shake this land divine. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In battle we shake this land divine. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. With the ocean in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In this moment, powers redefined. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will open the door to brighter days and skies that shine. Our future's ours, it's yours and mine. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. It's in the ballad. The ballad, the ballad. Your voices loud, it's crystal clear. Kiwi dreams and hopes collide. Truth, the one so stern with pride. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In battle we shake this land divine. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. The future's written in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In battle we shake this land divine. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. With the ocean in your hand. A chance to guide and take a stand. Community, rising hearts aligned. In this moment, powers redefined. It's in the ballad where we belong. Every vote builds a nation strong. Your council, your board, your mayor in line. Together we shake this land divine. From hills to shores, every voice will soar. Decisions made will...
Good afternoon. Welcome to It's in the Ballad. I'm your host Nick Hollander and we are live from Apuni Hall in Lower Hut. Today we have five candidates, six candidates. Five live, one restream who are vying for your vote. And there's only one, sorry, I messed that up. There's only one thing standing in your way and that is your vote. Let's roll credits. Credit's rolling? Not yet. Excellent. So, how's everyone? That's cool, that's cool. Hey, hey, you can work with this. You know my world now. There we go. There we go. And we're back. We're not back. What's happening?
Computer's running this again.
All right.
It's really weird, like it's jumping around with flash.
All right. Am I going live right now?
Yeah, we're on a single flash.
Okay. So, we are back. We are back. All right. So, we're going to start off with candidates giving their one-minute opening statements. And we like to do this randomly generated. And so I'm going to do that myself. I have the capability. Let's start with Nilu.
Kia ora koutou. My name's Nilu Jennings. And I'm a disability, disabled leader in our community as well as a place centre mum. I am standing for the central ward because I believe that together we can create a sustainable and future-focused city where everyone can thrive. Kia ora.
Excellent. Thank you, Nilu. Next up we have Glenda.
Kia ora koutou. My name is Glenda Barrish. And I'm re-standing in the central ward because I believe in having a really good and proactive council that listens to the people and engages with the people over every decision we make. I'm probably one of the longest-standing councillors on council. And I'm looking forward to being able to project your voice forward for further decisions. Kia ora.
Thank you very much. That wasn't a veiled hint at me, was it?
At me?
Ignore that. I will try to project as well. All right. Next up we have Simon.
Kia ora koutou. Hi, I'm Simon Edwards. And I'd really appreciate your vote as a central ward councillor. For me, it's back to my council beginnings. I finished a 27-year run as editor of Hut News during its award-winning golden years and became a central ward councillor. And I've been a citywide councillor for two more terms. But the central ward is the heart of where it's all happening in the next three years for the two issues I've championed. And that is fixing our Three Waters infrastructure and Riverlink. During my time on council, we've made good progress renewing leaking water and wastewater pipes more than other parts of the region. Metro Water takes over that role from July next year. But we need Hut councillors who will push hard for Hut's priorities, reasonable costs and a robust consumer charter. I think the number one issue for residents in this election is the size of their rates bill. With those new costs coming from Metro Water, Hut City Council needs a reset to find savings. We're going to have, need to find more efficient ways of doing things. And honestly, in the current cost of living crisis, there are going to be some things that council will have to do differently or maybe even stop doing. I'd appreciate your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Simon. All right. Tim?
Kia ora tefano. My name is Tim McNamara. And I am standing for council because I believe in our city and its future. I stand for being able to provide thoughtful density to our centre city to be able to decrease rates by increasing the revenue base. I provide a slightly different perspective to some of the incumbent councillors that we already have. And I want to provide a joint sort of view between an ecologically sensitive angle, being able to create a real positivity and vitality of an urban environment. And I want this to be a place where people can feel like they want to live in Lower Hut. They don't just have to live here because they couldn't afford where they actually wanted to be. Lower Hut is one of New Zealand's biggest cities. We're bigger than Dunedin, but you wouldn't think of us like that. Let's build a brighter city.
Thank you for that. Paki?
Kia ora tato. Now called Paki Marka Tokoingoa. I'm standing for the central ward. I was born in Lower Hut and I've lived in central Hut for 32 years. I'm Fakapapa Nati Kahunune Kiwarua and also Nati Kainuku and Nati Pokoro from Cook Islands. I worked at council for 14 years, leading the Riverlink project and various other urban strategies. I believe we need to make our city into a place where young people, young families and our grandchildren want to be and where they want to live by choice. Kia ora.
Thank you very much, candidates. All right. Next up we have our box questions.
Sorry, Mac. Yes, I'm going to jump up and remind you that we have Rodney as a remote candidate.
Thank you very much, Stacey. That is my bad and I apologize. Rodney?
Hi, I'm just checking. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Excellent. Thank you. Kia ora, I'm Rodney Cook. I'm a film director and stuntman and in the past life a tourism operator. But more importantly, I'm a proud local. I met my beautiful wife while working on Lord of the Rings. And we chose to raise our son in tropical Alsaun, which is not so tropical right now, but it's a place that we love. Now, imagine you're strapped into a car and you're tumbling down a cliff face.
Thank you, Rodney.
On fire. Well, that's the kind of stunt I get asked to figure out and produce. Now, anyone can drive off a cliff, but the real skill is walking away and doing it again. And that takes careful planning, creative thinking, man management and collaboration. And those are the skills that I bring to council. A cost of living is a real concern. So my aim is to make sure council is delivering the basics by fixing our pipes, roads and flood protection while keeping rates fair and achievable. Basically, try and get more bang for your buck. But we also need vision for our wellbeing. Riverlink is underway for flood protection and transport links, but it can be a lot more. I see it as a springboard to revitalise our city centre. Imagine a district of painting, wall paintings and art trails and food galleries and gardens and events that attract people into our area, which in turn supports our small businesses by using our commercial relationships and smart sponsorship. It shouldn't be an extra cost to the taxpayer. So, the Hut has a huge potential. And together we can fix the basics, keep costs under control and breathe new life back into the Hut. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. All right. Let's try this again. Next up we have our box questions. I haven't forgotten anyone else? Excellent. So, all right. I'll keep going. So each candidate gets a turn to choose a number between 1 and 28. I will draw the question from our reliable box. I will read the question and they have one minute each to answer. Now, they each have two butt-in cards and one defer. They can use their butt-in card to have a chance to answer a question that another candidate has chosen after that candidate has had their minute. The defer card is used to defer a question that they don't want to answer to a candidate of their choice, preferably one that is here. All right. So, let's start with our random order. Let's go with Tim. Choose a number between 1 and 28.
11.
11. At this end of the show, we don't have trouble with numbers that have already been chosen. All right. Question 11. We have X for x-ray. Who do you think is missing out on local government participation?
Who do I think is missing out on local government participation? I think that it's clear from the low rates of youth participation in elections that people who are younger, who don't have their own houses are outside of, sort of don't feel as though local government applies to them. If we can build more houses that are more affordable and more suitable, given that most of our housing stock suits a style of life or a size of family that doesn't exist as often. And we can use communication channels like video slightly more effectively to be able to make our communication more accessible and interesting. Then I think we're going to have a good chance at being able to engage a broader, deeper audience.
All right. Thank you for that. We have a butt-in from Nilu. All right. Your turn.
So, Kia ora. I really think that the people who are really missing out on being engaged in the council process are our diverse and disadvantaged whanau. It's, you know, I've been around door knocking and I feel it's really the disadvantage. It's really that those who have already, who already experienced disadvantage and who are diverse and they feel disenfranchised. They don't feel that they are part of the political process. And as a councillor, it would be, I feel that my job would be to represent everyone fairly. I will make it my real, a big, you know, a big passion that I will, I will go and listen really hard to these people who are often hard to hear, who often have quiet voices and represent them at the council table. Kia ora.
Thank you, Nilu. Next up, Rodney.
Choose number one.
Oh, good number. All right. We have question G. What is your approach to handling controversial and complicated issues?
Ah, well, the main thing for that is to actually listen. That's the first thing we need to do is just take on all sides and weigh the evidence and make decisions as best you can to make sure it's in the best interest of Lower Hut's long-term future. I'm not a great fan of knee-jerk reactions and short-term sort of patch-up jobs. So I believe in careful planning, just like I do on set. So that's kind of where I feel we need to go.
Thank you, Rodney. All right, we're just going to hold on a moment. The whole X split is playing up at the moment and he can't change cameras.
Yeah, the whole screen needs to change.
Okay. All right. So do we have anyone here from Upper Hut? Yep. Do you live in Upper Hut?
I know, but I was born here.
Whereabouts?
Uh...
All right. That's cool. That's cool. Hey, everyone chill. Just relax for a minute until he gets it back.
Are we, is anyone listening? And it's just static or?
People are watching live.
People are watching live. All right. So...
You can just, we can just chat.
What we're going to do is we're just going to chat. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
That's why I use Linux.
Yeah, I know. Yeah. My computer's doing a little update. That's why I use Linux. Yeah, I know. Yeah. My computer's being a little too fast. Okay. Go ahead.
All right. We're back for real this time. All right. So, next up, we have Glenda. Choose a box, please.
Number 19, please.
We have question H for hotel. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member?
I've been a city councillor now for many years. And alongside that, excuse me, my experience as a long-serving rotarian, a justice of the peace, a salarant, a manager, a volunteer worker dealing with thousands of people through many walks of life has led me into the homes and lifestyles of the people of Lower Hut. It's also given me time to talk to people about their ideas, their concerns, what worries them and how they want to have a better Lower Hut city moving forward. Kia ora.
Thank you for that. All right. Paki, you're up.
Question 20.
I've just found hard hitting question number three. We're going to leave it though for that section of the show.
It's longer.
Yeah. So it's in the last place you look. Question R. Hut City Council doesn't have many places where tactical tiles or tactiles are in use on footpaths to assist users who are visually impaired to know where it's safe to cross the road and what type of crossing they are using. Hut, I guess Hut City. Is this a core function of the Hut City Council to provide or a nice to have?
Now, walking's a, in my view, a public right. It doesn't matter if you're disabled or ably-bodied. I think it's important for a multitude of reasons. One is that walkability allows people to take part in society. The safer that walking is, the better. And a lot of people, even those who do not have good eyesight, may have trouble crossing the road. It's good for public health reasons. It's good for economic reasons. It's good for wellbeing. Therefore, it's good for the community. Kia ora.
Thank you. Couldn't agree more. All right. Next up we have Tim. No, sorry, not Tim, Simon. Tim's had a turn.
It's number 15 gone.
15 is still there. Question C. What council committees would you prefer to be on if elected?
Well, my strengths are in the infrastructure and regulatory area. There's only one council committee. I haven't been involved in this triennium. So I've tackled things like the Tiawa Kairaringi Hut River Floodplain Management Committee, the Regional Transport Committee, the Major Projects Board and Central City Steering Group, all because they link in with infrastructure, which is where my real interests are, especially as they relate to Riverlink. If the call is for council to get back to its knitting, then surely the core of that is good transport access, clean water, protection from flooding, especially when the scientists tell us we're going to see, you know... the scientists tell us we're going to see, you know, a twenty percent increase in the number of storms and a, at least a twenty percent increase in the intensity of them. So we really, we need to be ready for that. But on top of that, we've got to be looking after our natural environment. So that's my fit. I, I love infrastructure things and on the regulatory side of things, my district licensing experience comes into it and looking after businesses there. Cheers.
Thank you. Okay, Nilu.
Question three.
Question three. We have Z for zebra or a zebra. If a candidate is found to be breaking the campaign rules, do you believe that the candidate should publicly own the mistake or issue or should it be able to be brushed under the rug and why?
Um, yeah, it's a pretty straightforward question for me. I would, I think that they should own up and they, they should own their mistake. It should be something that should be dealt with, you know, with, with what the rules that are already in place. And, and that's, I guess, the responsible way to deal with, with that issue.
Thank you very much. All right, we've made it through one round of questions and we will start with another random order generating and Simon, you are first.
Number six, has it gone?
Six is still there. We have B for Bravo. Is rate money being spent responsibly?
Yeah, I think on the whole it has, yeah. We've had quite exhaustive annual and long-term plans to try and find savings. Just in this financial year we're headed into, we asked officers, we demanded officers, they find another $600,000 worth of savings because we know that people are hurting out there. And we've had some painful decisions to make too. I mean, we cancelled the clubhouse in Ninei, we, we cancelled our city, our roving city ambassadors. Now, they were hard decisions to make, but we're very aware that rates bills are hurting some families. We're doing things like our dig-it-once-do-it-right mantra. So instead of, you know, we relay a footpath, you know, times past you would have come back and it'd be dug up again another few months when you're putting in a new pipe. We, we definitely are clamping down on that sort of wasteful spending. And we were an early adopter of the new traffic management protocols. People hate road cones and so, and road cones mean cost. Over, overly elaborate traffic management, we have knocked that on the head.
Thank you for that. We have a but-in from Glenda.
Thank you. We need rates to survive as a city and ideally we, I think we're doing the best we can. One of the things that I'm finding out there on the campaign trail is that the rates impact has hit a lot of families very, very drastically. Does this mean we need to be financially responsible for everything we do? Well, the answer is yes. Some of our rates take, cover the administrative costs of running a council and I'm not particularly sure that we're doing this well enough. Our staffing levels have risen where it has become evident we have lost a lot of our previous experienced people and we've had to increase the amount of staffing to deal with the overall problems. I do think this is an area we could work on even more so.
Thank you. All right, next up, oh, we have another but-in. This time from Tim. All right, go ahead.
I feel as though both of the incumbents have spoken, it might be worthwhile to provide just a little bit of a supplementary sort of thought there. It is really important that council officers have been like pushed for savings, but I do think there's a lot of focus on like essentially the ones column. So with road cones, it's 1.3 million dollars of the council's budget, whereas over on the other side, up in close to the hundreds column would be water and riding. It's by far, it's close to seventy percent of the budget. And pushing on some of the contractors and ensuring that doing things really boring like saying to some of the commercial providers and applying more commercial pressure to those contracts is a much more boring way, but a way that you could start to save much more money than a couple of hundred grand here and there and really start to think about millions of dollars over the course of multiple years.
Thank you, thank you. Yep, good answer, good answer. All right, next up, Paki. Twenty-five? Q for Quebec. What budget line item would you remove to help bring rates down in Upper Hut, it says? Let's, let's do Lower Hut though. Let's do Lower Hut, just for, for Q.
Sorry everybody, I'll own up to that, that's my fault, I didn't catch that.
That's all right, that's all right. Yeah, yeah, and I was going to fall on the sword for you. Let's read it again. I will do that too. What budget line item would you remove to help bring rates down in Lower Hut without disrupting basic services?
I'm going to defer this one to somebody who knows the budget better than I do.
That's what they're for.
Can I defer to the audience?
All right, what's the vote on that? No, 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 no.
I'm joking.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, no, we can't do that. Who do you choose?
Can you repeat the question please?
Yep, not a problem. What budget line item would you remove to help bring rates down in Lower Hut without disrupting basic services?
Ooh. Actually, there is a lot of things in the, the budget and the encompassing the budget line that I think we could be relooking at. I would hate to actually say one thing off the costs. I do know that, of the costs, sorry, I do know that we need, as I've said, to relook at staff costs again to make sure that we are spending money properly and where we can make cuts overall to, without disrupting the level of service that we are doing.
Thank you for that. Good defer. All right, next up we have Rodney.
Question number three still around?
Sorry, what question was that? Number three? All right.
Number three, yeah, why not? Give it a whirl.
P for Panama. Plenty of councils have youth councils and it seems the youth voice is missing here and would be great to have back. Are you in favour of a youth council for Hut City Council?
Yes, I absolutely agree with that actually. Young people bring fresh ideas and energy and their voice is vital and they do need a seat at the table. I mean, they, they're actually the trendsetters, if you can imagine what's, what's going to be happening. I mean, I remember when I was in Berlin and the wall was coming down and that was caused by, by a youth movement, believe it or not. So that really started a change in that whole regime. So yeah, I think they've got a, a real, real voice to be heard.
Thank you Rodney. All right, next up we have Tim.
I will, eleven. Did I choose eleven first? Thirteen.
Ah, lucky thirteen, lucky thirteen. All right. Question I for India. What should the local government be doing about climate change?
Local government in New Zealand has some really important messages and actions that it can take relating to climate change. It is in charge of its roding and active cycle, sorry, active transport network. We can join the dots of our cycle network to, because of finish the pieces that have been put in place. It also is in charge of its water, or at least it is for a little bit, a little bit longer, and some of the other, other impacts like regenerating its natural environment. We are a authority that has responsibility for a lot of forest and a lot of waterways and they can be enhanced. And one of the things that I would love to see is more wetlands in our territorial authority.
Thank you for that. We have a, oh, Nilu was first on the draw by a second, oh, a split second.
Kiara, I really feel that there is something more urgent that our local government can do. I really feel we've, we've put in flood protection, which is fantastic in the form of Riverlink and, and you know, I really hope that that serves us really well. But even more importantly than that, we need to be building resilient and inclusive and connected communities because I think that's the way that we are going to get through this, this period or this, this whole era of climate change by being really resilient as communities and being able to draw on each other and being, having, you know, having a plan of how we're going to get through these times of, times of, you know, emergency. That is what I feel is the most important thing that we can do at the moment.
Thank you for that. All right, we have another but-in from Simon.
Thanks for the opportunity because I, I really do believe climate change is one of the biggest problems facing us and, and what we should be doing is continuing with the things that we've started to do and that's to get our emissions down. Hut City Council's replacing its gas-fired heating in all our swimming pools with electricity. And Ninei Pool, for example, we've got twenty percent more, more space up there, but twenty percent lower emissions. We need honest conversations with our residents about the flooding risk and sea level rise. Our district plan is starting to send those signals about where we shouldn't be intensifying anymore and we need to honestly have some conversations about potential retreat in some areas. A, a big component of Riverlink and the shared path in seawall we're building round Eastbourne is actually to do with climate change rather than anything else. So as well as the transport benefits there, enabling people to, you know, cycle and use micro-mobility and so on. Our council, council can't do it on its own and that's why we have a community climate change strategy, Tiara Hakamua, and we encourage and help people to make changes in their own lives, to do, to get ready for climate change coming at us and reduce their own emissions.
Thank you for that. Very quick segue, does Eastbourne still have the ferry going to it?
Certainly does, Harbour Ferry, East by West Ferry on our rejuvenated Days Bay Wharf makes that trip daily, very popular.
Nice.
And it's, and it's electric these days.
Even better. I used to take that to and from school. All right, we have Glenda. Your turn.
Question seven.
Lucky number seven. I say they're all lucky. All right, question A, B. What, what's your biggest priority for the next term and how do you intend on delivering that?
Okay, being a long-term councillor, I think the one thing that we all need to focus on is Riverlink and its successful delivery. It's going to take the majority of care and consultation to ensure it happens correctly. Once again, out there on, on the, on the sidewalk, if you like, get asked a lot of these questions and Riverlink, apart from rates, Riverlink comes next. What's going to happen? Are we going to be cared for? Is there going to be enough parking once the parking is taken away from the riverbank? And, you know, overall the safety and the prudent delivery of services alongside our rates has to be the main priority.
Thank you Glenda. Oh, we have a but-in for Buggy.
Yeah, Kiara, thanks Glenda. My biggest priority is creating the best city we can to retain our young people, our young families and my great-grandchildren and everybody else's grandchildren to live here. I think we need to think structurally and long-term and I think we can be ambitious and we must work closely with our community, our partners. And we know how to do this because we're already doing it with Riverlink. So I think we can adapt Riverlink as a methodology, if you like, or some version of it in the delivery of infrastructure, housing and urban development. Kiara.
Well said, well said. All right, we are up to our third round. You didn't get question that? That's because it was a but-in and I got confused. Nilu.
Number seven.
Just had number seven.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, let's go with that. Question E for Echo. E for Echo. What are your priority areas for expenditure?
So at the moment, a lot, the rates, the way the rates are being, we're, we're spending, I think, about sixty to seventy percent of our, of the, of the money that council gets from its rate payers on fixing the pipes. And to me, that is the biggest priority. We need to fix those pipes and once that is done, then we can start thinking about other things. But until that is done, and I think we'll take the best part of ten years, that is the priority.
Thank you very much. All right, round three. This time Glenda, you're up.
Question fourteen, has it gone?
That has not gone. V for Victor. What should council priorities be when making grants to the community?
So having been involved in a, in a grants committee, we always look for the fact of whether people are applying for money, whether they have received money before, if the project has been shown to work, if they do receive money from other organisations, or if it is a new project and how the report has been put together. First and foremost, we need to be very careful about the money that we give out. There are a lot of deserving charities, there are a lot of deserving people out there that want to make sure that their projects work. To be able to do that and to spend the money wisely, we need to go through all of the things that I've just mentioned beforehand before making decisions.
Thank you for that. Next up is Tim.
May I ask question twenty-eight?
You may. But can you? I am sorry, that was uncalled for. All right, question L for Lima. What part of the community or business sector does council need to work more closely with?
I really want to answer this question, but I really want to see someone use the defer card. I think that one of the parts of council and a part of our community that doesn't think that is well-engaged with, council is the business community and in particular smaller businesses, they feel as though they are left out of the story. Their rates are higher than residential rates, but they feel like they don't have as much say and/or, and in terms of what to do about that, in the same way that we might change the messaging to include more inclusivity in terms of younger people and people from other diverse, we can also go in more actively engage with the business community in ways that fit their day-to-day, possibly through advocacy groups like the Hut Valley Chamber of Commerce and other advocacy organisations to communicate what's happening more effectively.
Thank you. All right, Rodney, your turn.
What's left?
Oh.
You, you can choose for me.
All right, that I can do.
Thank you.
All right, we have K for Kilo. What are your ideas for helping people who don't have good internet access to be involved and have their say?
You have to go up, old-school, I think, just simple visible updates in public spaces like notice boards and community centres, use the radio and local papers. Not everyone's online, you know, but everyone deserves a voice. So yeah, you'd have to just sort of reach out to the communities and, and public spaces and just go old-school as best you can if they don't have access to the actual internet, you know.
We have a button, but thank you Rodney. All right, uh, Tim.
Uh, Kiara Rodney, that was, I want to just supplement that with, uh. Yes, it's old school, like the council existed before the internet, but people have phones now. So even if they don't have the internet that we might think of, uh, in terms of like, let's say a computer at home. They are very likely to have a phone at home. Much more likely to, than to have a cellphone than a landline, for example. Another way that council can really engage is it runs hundreds of events every year. And those events are all points we're of contact with the community. You know, as a dad, I benefit from that because the library runs dozens of things every week. And yet, uh, and, and so I think that there are many places where a little bit of extra thought can go a very long way. To being able to increase participation in council.
Thank you. Okay, Nilu. I'll, I'll give you eight. Not because, um, I didn't want to give you seven, but because it's already gone. S for Sierra. Do you think the council should be involved in providing social housing and how so? And if so, how?
Um, I don't know the scope of social housing very well, but I don't, I, I feel, I feel at the moment, it's not something that should, that. The council should take on. Um, social housing is a primarily a central government, um, operation. And I think the, the risk of, of local government trying to take on social housing as well is that. There might be people who will fall between the cracks if there are two, two, um. Two kind of providers of the social housing. I think there, there could be a risk that people will fall through the cracks.
Thank you, Nilu. All right, we have a button from Simon.
Yeah, I think it's my last button card, but this is worthwhile butting in on because I think we should be involved. There's far too many people in the hut who are living in, um, cars and garages and overcrowded houses. Um. Um, we, council, Hut City Council owns about two hundred and ten social housing units. Uh, and they provide a, a warm and secure place for low-income elderly and socially disadvantaged. We're in a good position where we have a property development company, Urban Plus. It's self-sustaining. It builds, uh, uh, it adds to our housing stock by building both market and affordable houses. And the profit from that is ploughed back into our social housing portfolio. Unfortunately, because council owns, uh, these housing units, uh, the tenants don't, uh. Qualify for the accommodation supplement and that's a bit of a drawback. And I, I guess a case could be made that if we sold our units, that's thirty million dollars odd of debt that we could retire. But the only way I personally would ever contemplate, uh, making such a sale would be to have a cast iron assurance. That it would go to a community housing provider in perpetuity and the tenants that we currently have would be looked after.
Thank you very much. All right, um, next up, Simon.
Ooh, uh, eighteen, has it gone?
Not yet, not yet. T for Tango. What is your understanding of invisible and visible disabilities? And what are you going to do for the disability community of Lower Hut?
Look, I, when I was writing an answer to this, I felt I should defer to the real expert on the topic in this room. And that's Nilu Jennings, who has showed, you know, brings lived experience to these issues and has been a champion. Uh, and an advocate for people, uh, who have disabilities. And I'll acknowledge, uh, councillor Barrett too. Who has some expertise in this area, but I have a go at, at answering it because, um, uh. You know, we know that, um, fifteen percent of our population is sixty-five, uh, going to be sixty-five and older. And that's only going to accelerate. Uh, we need to look after those people with, with, uh, footpaths and those tactile, um. Tiles that we were talking about on street corners earlier. We, we, we definitely need to, to. Provide for people who have vision and other disabilities. Um. I think in every building or project or service that, um, that we undertake, we ask our officers to report. On finances, on the legal side of it, on the climate change side of it. I think there should be another thing that we should demand they report on each time. How does this affect our people with disabilities and how are we going to accommodate that?
Thank you.
Kiara, thank you, Simon, because, you know, when I read this, it says, what is the understanding of invisible and visible disabilities? So invisible disabilities cover many aspects such as autism, intellectually impaired, anything that imparts. Uh, sorry, that impacts his individual's life that may, that the ordinary person may not necessarily see. Visible disabilities can be those in wheelchairs, blindness, autism, again, cerebral palsy, Down syndrome, anything. I work in this area on a day-to-day basis and I have a high understanding of what impacts. Our people with disabilities. I also have family members that have invisible disabilities. And I know the impact that it has on them in an ordinary society. I want to work more closely with the disability community of Lower Hut. And I think, you know, I was speaking to an officer recently and he said to me, Glenda, we always know when something comes up. That you're going to say, and how does this impact on our disabled community? So I'm going to keep on asking those questions because I want the answers to ensure that everyone is treated fairly. Kiara.
Thank you. Nilu.
So, um, that, uh, there's a really cool thing that I've learned about. It's called the sunflower. It's a sunflower that people can wear if they have an invisible disability. Um, my, my disability is invisible to a lot of people. They don't realise that I have a visual impairment. Until they realise they can't cross a road, um, or read, or read, uh, size twelve font. But, um, so invisible disabilities can be anything, absolutely anything. But it's just something that, that people are not aware of until you make them aware of it. Um, so the sunflower is a really cool emblem if people, if we actually mainstream it in the hut. So people know that people with, who are wearing a sunflower have some sort of difficulty. It doesn't even have to be a disability. Um, and I think, I guess for me, the real, the, the thing about. You know, what we can do for disabled people, if we do things for disabled people, they will make things better for everyone. So I'll just take one of them and one of the most easiest ones is making accessible footpaths. Um, if we created accessible footpaths, it would not only make it good for disabled people like myself. Who has really bad depth perception and often falls over if there is a, a raised, a raised bump on it, on a footpath. But would also make it better for older people, for children, for actually everyone in society. There are totally mainstream people who find it hard walking on footpaths with lots of bumps and, um, and ridges on them. So it's, it's, yes, yes, I agree, we should be doing stuff for disabled people. But when we do things to help disabled people, we help everyone. And that's what we need to really get through to, to council and to the community that, that we can all do this together for everyone.
Thank you very much. All right, we have time for one more question and I believe it is Baggy.
Two, thanks.
Not quite the magic number, but we'll get there. All right. Three is the magic number. Um, AA. Tell us what you think of local government or local democracy.
I think it's not well understood by council and community. And I think this shows in the low turnout of voters at elections. I mean, the value of local government and what it stands for, I think, could be better communicated. I think local government needs to fill or at least facilitate filling the gaps, um, where central government. Or other organisations do not provide for certain things. Uh, for example, homelessness is not being addressed adequately. And our community could choose to, to do something about it and agree to fund that. But council can do things within existing budgets, things in kind. Council can facilitate. Just through, um, staff who have, um, understandings on the agencies who can provide housing. Um, kind order, um, chips, which are community housing providers, et cetera. So at a minimal cost, I think council can play a role in many of these things which are not provided for very well by central government. Kiara.
Thank you very much. All right. Um, we'll be back in 10 minutes with hard-hitting questions. Yeah, come on.
We're taking a pause, just a short little breather to stretch out your legs. You don't need a leader. The lunchroom will be back, so don't go too far. But for now, you can wander wherever you are. Intermissions aren't really a thing anymore, but we think they're cool, a tradition to adore. A moment to breathe, have a laugh, maybe chat. There's magic in breaks. I'm work keeping mad, head to the lobby, I mean your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime. Head to the lobby, I mean your kitchen with glee for snacks that are tasty and drinks. Fill up your plate, pour a glass, take your time, then come back refreshed, we'll resume on a dime.
Oh shit, don't panic, bud. It's almost time to get back to the show. The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. If there's still hard hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh. The candidates have stretched their legs. The candidates have stretched their legs, been partying, taking a break. Oh, 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 oh. There's still hard hitting questions, closing statements and stuff you want to know. So grab the set you want home. So grab those snacks, here are answers and prep for decisions you need to make. Oh, 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 oh.
And we're going to start round two of hard hitting questions. All right, and we're back. All right, we're going to start off round one of hard hitting questions. Question one. Now, I have two hard hitting question ones here, so I'm going to try the first one and hopefully it's right. Oh, there's one way I can fix this. Ah, there is a lot of talk about amalgamation into a unitary authority similar to Auckland Council. What are your views on this? Paki, would you like to start?
Yeah, sure. I think this is worth a very serious discussion. Being an urban planner, I think that housing, business, industry, transport, infrastructure, workforce, recreation, public services, et cetera, must be arranged into the right areas for the right reasons and at the right time across the region. We cannot afford to operate as individual cities locked into self-interest. There's simply not enough money, talent and influence for any city in our region to operate in isolation. There is comprehensive data which shows that larger cities are more efficient, more productive and require less infrastructure than smaller cities per capita. Given the chronic lack of resources, our region needs to act as a team and we must all run the same direction. Kia ora.
Thank you. All right, Neelu. Neelu.
Yes, I totally agree with what Paki's saying. And I would like to add, it's all about economies of scale. And if we do amalgamate, I think it would be, I mean, I think we really do need to think about this option. And have a really, really good, robust discussion about it because economies of scale means that we can get a lot, we get a lot more for our dollar. Just like Paki said, we lack resources. We need to be doing as much as we can with as little as we can, especially in this day and age. So I am, yeah, I would love, I would love if we would have a really serious discussion about this option. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Glinda.
Kia ora. Once again, thank you Paki for answering, I think, you know, most of the ideas that we are possibly thinking about. This is a, this is a tough question to ask. The residents of both cities don't want to lose our identity and yet when you talk to them, they say this is almost a foregone conclusion. I do think we need to look at ways how we can retain our own identities if this was to happen and how we can make our own part of the city of where we live special. And so to not lose that initial identity, if you like. Kia ora.
Thank you for that. Well said. All right, next up, Tim.
It is really amazing that we're having this ability to look back and see 15 years of the super city. The threat of amalgamation happened to HUT before and council got scared, decided to build a lot of stuff and spend a lot of money. And I look at, say, the Sportsville complex and a bunch of other really intensive capital expenditure that happened about 10, 12 years ago. However, in saying that, if our, if we are really worried about rates and this is shown to be efficient and effective for the region, we do behave as an outer suburb of Wellington. We don't have our own airport, we don't have our own stadium. And so it probably makes sense if we can bring everyone along with us.
Thank you very much. All right, Rodney.
Yeah, it's an interesting one. There's pros and cons for, the pros is obviously for the amalgamation is you get a bigger pool of money and you basically share resources, et cetera. But the cons is that you, looking at the Auckland model, it created distance between communities and decision makers. And some say it created a mega bureaucracy. So we do need strong regional collaboration, but we, I think if we can keep our voice strong and decision makers close to the people, then I think it's kind of the way to go. I'm a bit cautious, cautious about it, actually. I'm from Auckland originally, a long time ago, but I've made the Hut my home over the last 25 years. And I really value our community-based way of life here. Where I feel if you, if you sort of get sucked into a super city type vibe, you do find that some regions will go by the wayside. And I've seen that happen in Auckland. So that's just my concern, but you know, if it benefits, if it stacks up and it benefits us as a Hut city, then I'll be all for it. It's a case of weighing the evidence and what it can bring to the table.
Thank you, Rodney. All right, Simon.
Yeah, cheers. I sort of agree with everyone else. We certainly need to be having these discussions. I don't think it is the case that bigger is necessarily better. But if we are on a mission to find savings, and we are with those big three waters costs coming at us, 25 billion worth of costs over the next 30 years in this region, we need to be exploring the potential for those economies of scale that would come from amalgamation. I don't know if it needs to be a super city. I mean, I've long been in favor of exploring a merger with upper Hut, having just one Tiawa Kaerangi area. It makes a lot of sense to me, considering we already have a lot of joint services, the Silverstream landfill, the sewage treatment, library services and so on. We do a lot of sharing already and we could, we could expand on that. With the resource management reforms that this government is getting underway with a more regional planning approach. And we just heard this week that they're going to change the status for building consents authorities to try and get the cost of building down. So there's a whole lot of reasons why cooperating between councils is something we need to look very seriously at.
Thank you, Simon. All right, let's get to our second hard hitting question. Do you think you have any personal or professional relationships that could become a conflict of interest while serving as a council member? Let's start off with Tim.
I have interests. So I am a volunteer with Forest and Bird. I am a volunteer with Skelton Aotearoa. But I, and also I'm on the, sit on the committee of Friends Who Fly Through Two Stream. I own a business that is a member of the Hut Valley Chamber of Commerce. I don't necessarily think those are conflicts, but you definitely have an interest or a stake in the Hut. And yeah, it's one of the reasons why I'm here.
Thank you. All right, Simon.
All of those sorts of involvements that Tim just mentioned are bonuses. They're not, they're not things to be embarrassed about. That's what makes you a good councillor when you have those links. I don't have any professional or personal relationships of getting away being a councillor, no skeletons in the closets, no financial contracts with council, and that's an important thing. I have an outside job. I work at Federator Farmers as a communications person and I know that if a rural issue crops up when we're having a district plan discussion or something like that, I need to declare it, move myself back from the table because there's a clear conflict there. But I think most councillors know where, when they need to step aside like that. And I do think honesty and trustworthiness are absolutely key characteristics that ratepayers should demand from their councillors.
Thank you very much. Next up, Neelu.
Yeah, so I wouldn't think, I don't really think that I have any skeletons in the closet. I am quite a transparent person. In my day job, I'm a mum full time, but I also run a trust board, which is a, it's called, sorry, it's called Integrated Sport Aotearoa. And integrated sports are sports that cater for everyone and anyone who wants to play sports. People who are excluded from the social, the sports, social sector. So a lot of disabled people, people with mental health, people with all sorts of health conditions, people LGBTIQ, anyone who is diverse can play these sports as well as able-bodied people, mainstream people. And they're games that they can all play together. Because historically, people with disabilities have been quite segregated while playing sports. So I don't really say that I would have any conflicts. And if I did, it would be, I would have to, as a councillor, I would remedy it straight away. Kia ora.
All right. Paki, you have the floor.
Yeah, Kia ora. I don't, I believe I don't have any professional conflicts. But I mean, I am self-interested in some ways and I think I should share these with most of my colleagues here. I'm really interested in making a great city. I'm really interested in keeping our young people here. I'm really interested in the less fortunate. I'm really interested in housing. But at the same time, I'm really interested in good social and economic outcomes. Now, we want good, sustainable, resilient communities with good business which grows local jobs. I make no apology. That's, that's my driver. And unfortunately, we can't necessarily please everybody at the same time. So we do need to look at the big picture. Kia ora.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, Glinda.
My answer is very short and sweet. The answer is no. We are asked at the very beginning of every council meeting whether we have a conflict of interest. And then, as Simon says, it's a matter of trust. If you say you don't, then you don't. If you do, then you sit back from the table. I'm standing as an independent, so I'm here to represent the voice of my community and I do that with honesty and integrity. Thank you.
Very much. Rodney.
Yeah, I also have no conflict of interest. But my interest is obviously to make the Hut and our home thrive. As you know, I'm in the film industry currently and I'm a, what I call a contractor. So I, I can sort of go anywhere and we've done a lot of filming actually right here in the Hut. We've actually filmed King Kong, Avatar, even some of the parts of Lord of the Rings and also local TV shows. I'm actively talking to a producer in America right now and he's interested in filming in New Zealand. And I'm actively trying to get him to be based on one of our, one of our Hut studios, like Avril Studios, for example, or Lane Street Studios in upper Hut. And that'll bring like a little film town back into the Hut. So I guess I wouldn't consider that a conflict of interest. I'd just call that more promotion of the Hut. So, but that's where I'm going from. So yes, I don't have any, any conflicts. But if anything did arise in my business dealings in the film, I will step myself out of that.
Oh, thank you. It sounds like we have not really any conflicts, but a lot of interests. All right, hard hitting question number three. What is your position on retaining the Mana, sorry? Mana Karangi Keeta Maori Ward for Hut City Council and the Te Ubuku O Te Ika Maui Maori constituency for Greater Wellington Regional Council? And why do you hold that position? Rodney.
I believe Maori wards are about giving everyone a fair seat at the table. I support fairness and inclusivity. New Zealand is built on partnership and diversity. And I really do believe that representation does matter. And we need long-term solutions that respect rights and bring people together. And that's kind of my belief system. That's why I'm actually doing this, you know, running for council. It's not like I aspire, I want to be on the council and be a politician. That's not really my, what I'm here for. I'm here to try and help people and hear people and listen to people. And I think that's really important. So I don't like the idea of diverse of short-term policies that put people, pull people apart. So you know, that's, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Neelu. Time's up. No.
Thanks. Yeah, I believe very, very, very firmly in Maori wards being a part of the council. Didity is the founding document of New Zealand about Aotearoa. And, and in the three, in the three articles, it is explicitly, explicitly stated that Maori must be represented at every level of society and governance. Government is one of those levels. So by having a Maori ward, a specific Maori ward, we are, we are allowing Maori to be represented at the council level and also allowing the Maori voice and perspective to be, to be heard and understood. So I think, yes, I'm very, very, very behind Maori wards. Kia ora.
Thank you, Neelu. Paki.
Yeah, Kia ora. Maori wards must be retained because Maori as a treaty partner requires appropriate representation. Many decades of poor representation across both local and central government has led to some of the poorest outcomes across all New Zealanders and their experience by Maori and Pacifica. The statistics show appalling outcomes in jobs, housing, health, prisons, life expectancy, et cetera. And these are all opportunity costs to all of society. Our population is becoming more brown and we know this. Therefore, our economy and our university wellbeing as a country is becoming increasingly reliant upon the performance of Maori and Pacifica. Only Maori can describe the conditions under which they can thrive. And we should embrace what Maori have to say about the future. I've worked with several Maori communities and common to all of them is the need to do what is right for all people and not leave anybody behind.
Thank you very much. Glenda?
Sometimes as a councillor, we need to vote on something to allow the correct consultation to take place. And that gives us the opportunity to say that we have clearly heard the voice of our people. I don't believe Hut City Council has performed wrongly in the way that we've been doing things of late. We have clearly been listening to the Maori voice within our community. And we are blessed with having four Maori councillors on board at the moment. I have a multicultural family, but I'm also in two minds. I have spoken to many Maori and non-Maori who have differing thoughts only also. For instance, there are many Maori who do not want to see this go ahead because they feel that it will divide our city. Many years ago, our prominent comatua talked to Hut City Council, who said he was not in favor of Maori wards for the very reason that it could divide things. I'm looking forward to the voice of our people telling us what they want to do.
Thank you very much. All right, Tim?
It's strange as a Pakiha here, sitting in a tie, wearing a tie. But I will go ahead and spend the next 50 seconds putting a viewpoint out. Pakiha arrived in the late 1830s in Patone. And essentially, over the next 30 years, drove Iwi and Hapu out of the Hut Valley. And then spent the next century or more stripping all of the forests and all, all of the environment away. If this is an opportunity for providing, restoring a little bit of that mana, then I think we should ensure that Maori wards are retained and Maori representation is strengthened. Because we've spent the last two centuries doing a really bad job at including everyone in democracy and the future of our country.
Thank you, Tim. All right, well said. Simon?
Yeah, very good. I voted in favor of establishing a Maori ward. And I'm looking forward to the contribution that Tiawa Pukatapu will make as our first Maori ward councillor. I think it's a great shame that people won't get to see how our inaugural Maori ward will work before having to answer a referendum on that question, on its future and whether we keep the ward. We know that 20% of Lower Hut's population identifies as Maori, and we know that's increasing as Paki has noted. A ward guarantees they have a representative to bring that perspective to the council table rather than it being on chance. Contrary to some people's belief, it is not straying from a one-person, one-vote principle. To vote in a Maori ward, you need to be on the Maori roll. And just like anyone else, you get to vote for a mayor and citywide councillors. It's no different from a geographical ward. There's nothing unfair about it, nothing to be afraid or resentful of, and everything to gain from living up to our partnership obligations under Te Tērētē and to hear that Ti'au Maori worldview, as well as all the other things we weigh up in our decision-making.
Thank you, Simon. All right. Let's get ready to receive our candidates' closing statements. And we're going to start with Simon.
Firstly, I'd like to thank the, it's in the ballot team for giving us this opportunity. We've spoken a little bit about how hard it is to get people interested in local government. And you guys have worked really hard to, to bring some of the issues forward, and I thank you for it. Because councils really do touch on a whole lot of aspects of our lives. A lot of talk today about the need to get rates bills down. And you know, as I've said, I certainly appreciate that with metro water bills coming at us very fast. Whatever the shift of water services cost to metro water are next year, there has to be a corresponding drop in the size of Hut City's rates bills. You know, there's a big affordability issue going on in our community. We don't have to be necessarily cutting a whole lot of services. We can be smarter about the way we do things. And just, just to give you one example, we've moved recently to a digital online booking system for all our community halls and other venues. Now, that simple change saved $114,000 a year and enabled a redistribution of staff. We can do some amazing things with AI as well. I'd really like your support. I can hit the ground running as an experienced councillor.
Thank you, Simon. Tim?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for staying with us. And thanks very much to the team for putting this on. Council can feel kind of stodgy and boring. And yet, here's an opportunity for everyone to kind of get excited again and really think and reflect about the future that they're going to have. I want to be part of creating a future that is aspirational, positive, vibrant. And the way to do that is with people and bringing more people into the city. And we, bringing the city along with it. If we have 30,000 people coming into the city over the next 30 years, they're not all going to fit over Melling Bridge. We can't just throw them over onto Wanui Mata because the Wanui Hill won't allow another 10,000 vehicles. A vote for me is a, a vote for thoughtful density of being able to be more connected with the environment, for having more housing that is more appropriate. And by the way, I quite like cycleways.
Nothing wrong with that. Glenda?
Thank you, everyone. And I haven't prepared anything for my final statement other than to say, as a chair many years ago of a community committee, I chose to take all my meetings to different areas of the city that allowed more people to attend. Some people have an aversion to being in the council chambers. There's a bit of a fear there, I think. These meetings were attended by council offices and were a great way to have people involved. I am a community person. I've always been a community person. I've been in your lounges. I've been in your kitchens. I've been everywhere. I've been standing outside at your letterboxes, looking how tree roots have impacted your driveways. So while it may seem that I'm talking about the community stuff and not the big picture stuff, please believe me that I have all those things in mind. I represent you. I represent your voice. I want you to know that I have heard you. And a vote for me will continue to have those things done for you. Kia ora.
Thank you, Glenda. Paki?
Kia ora. Just to reiterate, I want to make a great city. We need to keep our young people. They become our future workforce, our talent, our businesses, and our city leaders. We need to make the right decisions now, and they need to be good ones. I think we need to make the most of our democracy and work transparently and authentically with our residents, our businesses, Maori, and our partners. So we need to do that well, and we need to think long-term. Kia ora.
Kia ora. Neelu?
Kia ora e te pana. Thank you, guys, and it's in the ballot for turning this up. It's really great that we can have this coreero. I guess for me, what I want you to understand or I want people to take away from me is that I'm really all about community as well. Community is at my heart. And I'm especially concerned at the moment. I know everyone is very, very concerned about the rates. But even more than the rates, we need to be thinking about climate change and the potential effects. And I think the way that we need to, the, the most important thing that we can do at the moment is to create inclusive and connected and resilient communities. We need, we need to know our neighbours. We need to be able to draw on our neighbours in times of emergency. If we, if we don't include everyone, if we're not listening to everyone, and we're not, and everyone is not represented and at the council table, we are not doing our job as, as a council. So my, my real big, you know, spiel, I guess, is that we need to be thinking about climate change and, and creating really resilient communities. Kia ora.
Thank you, Neelu. Last, but certainly not least, Rodney?
Oh, g'day. Yeah, we all know that we're in a cost of living crisis and it's real. And we also know that we're living on a floodplain and climate change is real. So I do a lot of walking around the river. My house is right beside it. So obviously, that's a concern for me. But what got me involved in actually stepping up and not being a film director or stuntie and going for council and putting my hand up is because I do really want to help our community. And I see, I see pain and I see graffiti and tagging and I see tired areas. And I want to basically help and get, like, like everyone else in the room, get communities to talk to each other, to share. And to, it starts with one person. It sort of does. It starts with you talking to your neighbour. And we can help each other out through this. With the Riverlink, I think it's a huge, huge opportunity to revitalize the city and bring back people and encourage businesses, small businesses, which is the backbone of our, our economy and also the heart of our community. So with the Riverlink infrastructure coming in play to, for the flood protection, et cetera, we can go hand in hand and we can create amazing, amazing sort of districts in that with the town planning, if we plan carefully. And it shouldn't cost the rate payer any more money. Because you know, if you're building a retaining wall full of concrete, well, if you just put the mould with this beautiful pattern, then you've got something beautiful to look at at the end of the day. So I'm imagining that we could actually make the Riverlink project to basically kickstart a tourism and a vibrant arts community as well. So that will bring people and foot traffic back into the heart of the city. So that's kind of where I'm at. And I see a lot of empty space, so we can do a lot of community gardens and, and food sharing as well as I walk around the streets. So anyway, that's my bag. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rodney. All right. Before I let you all go, I know it's very cold, but you've all been very patient. And you've been very lucky to be able to listen to some wonderful candidates this afternoon and evening. I'd like to say that we are a nonprofit and we get, we provide these shows with whatever we find in Sam's pockets and anything, donations that we receive from the community. You can visit or give a little page or do a direct deposit into our bank account. I'd like to thank Stacy, Sam, and myself, why not, for, for the show. And, but especially our candidates, all right? And our audience for tuning in. Good night. And I'll see you back here for our second installment of the Lower Hut G W R C. Thank you.
Kia ora.